Okay, call the order.
And what's on this for right now?
Six, oh, one.
Okay.
Central Standard and Official Time.
Time official, huh?
What do you like, small roll?
Bracken.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Galindo.
Here.
All present.
I don't see any unscheduled guests.
I'm scheduled, I'm Freedom of the Air Park here, so just never here.
And I don't see any people.
I was even ready to come last Wednesday.
Here.
When I sign everything, it's a race of me.
Visibly.
Oh, look, line item four, so it said A, fire an ambulance report.
Oh, we'll remember.
Go ahead, Pebbles.
First of all, we've had a committee on our pumper, which you were at that meeting in ties, so we really don't know much more on that, but just gonna let the rest of the board kinda know, why it went past the pump test, the green one did not. So with the ISO rating, when they come out, things could change, but we're trying to put them off till we figure out what to do with the pumper. So our committee will meet again later, and we'll try to get that figured out, but right now, we're in need of another pumper to keep our ISO rating at an eight right now. The repairs to the green one, if we chose to fix it, was gonna be eighteen thousand, I don't see anything wrong, eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars.
That's if they didn't find anything else while they were in there.
Yes. So being a 1970's model, it's probably not worth putting twenty thousand in, and we could maybe put it towards another one at a later date. Firefighters have been doing a structural firefighting class, there's been thirteen per taken it, there's ten weeks, it's forty hours, and an eight-hour live burn. We will finish up probably next Wednesday night, we've been meeting on Wednesday, six to ten, and then we met a Sunday. So with those, I don't know if this is the place to do it or not, I wanted to cook them a nice meal for doing that, because I'm in the class for long, those made it to one, you made it to all of them, I think it's been a very, very good class, and a lot of them's getting a lot of things out of it, so I don't know if that's something we need to go through you guys to get approved, to cook a steak tomorrow evening down here before class, or if you guys think that's appropriate or not. Allen Fire Fund.
Well, speaking that I'm in the class, hell yeah.
I'd just like to do something nice for them, I mean, it's a lot to go to that after you work a full day, and then go to class till ten o'clock at night, it's been a huge... and it's tough for them to get to leave town, so that's why we're bringing all the training here, because it's too tough for all of us to go out of town to get it.
I carried one down the ladder.
One? One, what?
I carried Shelley from Black.
Kinda probably.
It's been a good class, you guys can think on that, that's no biggie. Bucket Rally update, we ended up with a profit of thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I can say that again.
Thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. I've got all the numbers where we paid out, what we took out of the bank for our startup cost of gate concession change, souvenir, added money, we put that back in plus, and then we split our, obviously, the profit. Then Cam and Nixon that day had a garage sale, and she brought in four hundred and four dollars, and she earmarked it ambulance, so that went in the ambulance account from that day, so. Sponsors were down a bit, but still good, people were probably down a little bit, I felt, you know. Sold our t-shirts, did get a concession, so it was another good fundraiser for us. The, we've been on the forestry list for over two years, we finally got our new truck, it's at the county shed, we have a hundred and eighty days to make that a fire truck. We had a meeting tonight over at, of kinda what we wanted to do with it, we're gonna decide to put a six-hundred gallon tank or nine-hundred, and obviously, we gotta put lights, radio, paint it, it cannot stay, the tan. And we, we didn't get all the quotes in, to put a cannon on the front, so no one has to be on the back, is our goal, to keep everybody in the cap.
Who don't they?
Forestry, Oklahoma State Forestry.
Wasn't that the Israeli army?
It's sweet.
They nicknamed in Hollywood, so I'm waiting for the paint job to come down.
Let me take a picture.
So it's nice, we're excited to have, we've watched several fire departments use those in the last several years, and they can just get a lot done with them, they're amazing, so we're excited to have it. So on the, like I said, the quotes aren't in, but just kinda the numbers they're telling us, we're looking at about fifteen thousand dollars that we'll spend to get that company going.
That's over at the shed.
I can see it.
Or maybe Pebbles can.
I may have one on my phone, you can take that if you want, I may have one on my phone too.
You wanna saw standing in front of it with the red ribbon smiling.
Wait, let's get her.
Smash a bottle of beer on the balcony.
Yeah.
On our structural firefighter class, where we did a, where we do the eight-hour burn, we had to have helmets, structural helmets and gloves, we did order those, it was a pretty penny behind that, but they would not let us do the burns without those. The helmets we had were given to us from departments years ago, and they was twenty years old then, they wouldn't pass for us to go in, so that's through Costco, if that bills came through, yeah. We did pick up some lumber today, and it's gonna be charged to Town of Freedom, but they put fire on it for us, we're building a makeshift roof that we can train on tomorrow, I'm vetting a roof, so that one will come through. Freedom's hosting a vehicle extrication advanced class June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, OSU Fire Service will come out and instruct that.
Is Yovin texting you?
And then, the meeting I was at today at the Botec, storm sirens were discussed, have you guys done anything with storm sirens, or planning on doing anything with the storm sirens?
We talked about it several years ago.
Oh, dude, that was, yeah.
That was about it, 'cause the costs, 'cause we were looking at getting something that was online, that would, that anybody gets on their phone, you know, somebody's in their hoodie holder, just sort of.
You wouldn't know that.
You wouldn't look at it and like send them off, and we never got any quotes back on it.
Okay. What's County's doing, something, I don't know a lot about it yet, so we'll see where that goes. It'll reach to Capra, and that was what they kinda was deciding today, how far it would reach, if they wanted to add repeaters to get twenty-five miles out, so it's, it's still new, I know Alba's doing it right now, and Capra. So it sounds pretty promising, if we're interested. I don't know a lot about it.
Who sent out the signal, the E M A, or?
I asked that question, they can set it off through dispatch, storm spotters can set it off on their handheld radios, you know, fire chiefs or firefighters that go storm, whatever, sitting out here and see it, they can set it off with a total page, so, several ways you can do it, something with a cell phone too, so.
I would trust a spotter on the line with somebody on Norman's.
That's why I said, yeah, you gotta see it, that's not just set it off to set it off, you know, 'cause then people get to, wow, storm silent again. And my last thing is, have you guys, and I know it's kinda been discussed here and there too, on the E M T side, we've got two gone this week with work-related activities, and it is very difficult to cover during the day, have you guys ever thought of putting that, city knows where I'm going, putting that in the job description for our secretary or a town maintenance guy, where they're here eight to five every day to help cover your town, 'cause you're, we are wearing our volunteers out.
About fifteen percent went to, not like the law.
So you can't cover it whole. I mean, years ago, we went to an E M R agency, and that's where we get a call, Buffalo comes in to get our patients, Alba, Woodward, Winoco, we can't transport, we don't wanna go back to that, but if we can't cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, we lose it. So we, I don't know.
That'll be something to consider, yeah.
Are you looking for just somebody to drive, or you take the class and be able?
We need E M Ts. I mean, E M Rs are huge, where they can drive, like Bryant, but.
He can do both, so I mean, that does.
He's let his CPR card go, so we can't even use him right now, one quit, 'cause she doesn't wanna miss another family function, and I get it, we all miss them. So we're just asking for, maybe to look into some options, I don't know.
Stay real quiet.
He's volunteered, yeah, to drive before, and that's great.
But, well, I've been an E M R at least, but.
Yeah, I can't see much on camera there, we've used them, drivers, state doesn't like it if they're not even on.
City employees.
Huh?
City employees.
We need E M Ts.
Yeah.
Have you asked, like, the county too?
The what?
The county, like, in here, like, getting the brandy and asking about their employees, I mean, like.
He's good with us to, do any of them wanna take it?
Yeah.
No.
'Cause most of them are on fire too, and it's been suggested many times.
The secretary comes over here and.
It's an option.
Well, I suppose that's anything anybody needs.
I mean, we drive around town, look at household after household, and think who could do it, or who would want to give us the time to go do it, and then to be on call.
Lincoln did Wednesday nights.
Yeah. I mean, it's always, it's been a constant struggle.
If you don't have twenty-four hour coverage, then you can't, during the hours you have coverage, you can't take them to hospital or something?
If, if we, yeah, if we cannot cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, we cannot have an ambulance service. Wow. You can go to an E M R agency, and we can render care, more or less first aid, until a transport vehicle can get here.
So that would change your status from E M T to E M R?
Would still be E M Ts, but our agency would be an E M R agency, but it wouldn't be a transport agency.
So you got a patient that needs to be.
We're not gonna sit here.
Move it out, and you're waiting for a float to change a flat tire or something, and you have the people that can transport them, but you're not allowed to.
Yeah.
So you put one back with feet truck and hammer down.
And our volunteers, they volunteer at least eight hundred and eight hours a month, a volunteer.
A month?
A month, that's after their jobs.
Being available twenty-four hours.
Yeah, so it's tough, and we've got some that wanna hit the road now, we're just begging them to stay. I'm being serious. Shelley's got a couple of years left, and she'll retire, and she'll move home. We need some younger ones to.
We need young people.
We need people. So, if you guys might think about that, seeing what you guys come up with, do you guys have any questions or concerns with fire and ambulance?
Lynn, do you know anything about Alba's implementation of their alarm system for tornado?
I know they've been practicing with it a lot recently, in fact, I heard them on the scanner today.
They're getting a new system today.
Yeah.
They're testing everything today.
This is a test, don't do anything, this is a test, you know, I heard maybe five already.
So they're actually audio speakers or something?
Yeah, they can speak over theirs or do the sirens, and they have different alarms, like if it's a tornado, and then they have one, like a prisoner's escaped out of their prison there, it's a different sound, so, they have a couple different ones that they can do through town.
Do you know where those are, like, positions, I mean, are they?
I do have a map.
I say, 'cause I don't know, like, how big of an area it covers, would we need one, or would we need, you know, one on each end of the town, I mean, I don't know.
Looking at that map, and if that was the whole city, I think there was just six in the whole city of Alba, so about, we could get with one or two.
Like on a night, like tonight, where they might have tornado, they got that call system that'll call every number in town, and they may call and say, hey, we're gonna remind you of the alarm codes, and that's a pretty good idea, actually. Do you have a call system like that?
Yes.
Does Iris text?
I don't know. Our Iris text that we use through Woodward E M S, it'll text or phone call, just tell whatever you click. A lot, that's me sending them, it gets hard if the phone blowing up, no, it's an awesome little system, very quick.
No, I think we need to look at the siren.
Yeah.
Especially if it's something that's triggered by.
Totally, yeah, I mean, so that somebody didn't have to drive down here to the office, do something unless.
That's dangerous, or a fire truck driving around the city streets, that's happened before, that's not safe.
Eastern Colorado, we have town, I know about twice as big as this one, we had one siren, they took it out after several years, but you could hear that siren anywhere in town.
Always.
In fact, you could even hear it outside of town, it depended which way the wind was blowing, but.
So one way to get it is?
Yeah, well, the acoustics of the bluffs being here, if you probably put it on that side of the town, it'd probably just, you could probably hear it out there at girl hops.
Well, we got the ones that rotate, so send out every direction and.
The bad thing is, you have to test them once, so I, the reason they took theirs down is it used to go off at seven o'clock in the morning, I know, 'cause I lived right below it, and then it went off at noon, and then it went off at five, it just, what it was there for, they used it for a time clock, basically, and then everybody got, just had it out.
A lot of them wouldn't do, a lot of them just do it.
More doesn't do it, unless it's active weather, and then they.
Don't do it, that's a good play.
Yes, because we would play several ballgames, and then you're like, you just look around, especially when you're in more.
So that's all I have.
Okay. I don't have any problem with the fireman dinner.
And I know it doesn't reach all of our members, but, you know, I'll just have to read, warn the ones who are doing the training and putting out the effort.
Maybe you like it, believe it or not.
You probably will.
Better.
All right, guys, thank you all, appreciate it. See you, Lynn.
See you later.
Zach, see you, Sturridge.
Sturridge, you got anything for Lynn that's good for?
No, no, I just, I'm trying to keep up on the mowing, Travis, if we don't get hit with a gully washer tonight, then I'm, if you don't hear from me, he's coming, but if I call him, it'd be too wet to dig anyway, but, and I'd like to, while everything's still real green, burn that pile, it's a monstrosity now. So if we get, well, I have to be with Harrison while they're here, but I'd like to start it sometime this week or next week, and a little more rain would help too, but while it's still nice and green, we need to burn that thing, I mean, it's just out of control. Well, about all that, oh, I have to get a couple of bill valves for the bathrooms, they, the only thing that froze up and broke during the winter, I don't think it would have mattered, that's probably the coldest spell we've had in many years, but, otherwise, that's ready to go. I discovered that, and I turned the water on, and it was kind of, one toilet, it was holding the top on, and when I pulled it out, the top of it just blew off, got me real wet, real quick. Oh, yeah, and that's about it.
It'll disembark?
Yeah.
All right.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet, good job. Treasurer, clerk, do you have anything to, to report?
No, I am gonna ask that we transfer two thousand, okay, to transfer two thousand from the RV park to the general to cover the sand removal invoice that we paid last month, or month before last, for the water well stuff, just to, since sales tax income is steadily covering what we normally have during the month, anything extras, since that's kinda what RV parks for is, extra projects, so I would just leave a motion and approval on that, if like.
I'll make a motion, in a second.
Can I vote now?
All those in favor?
You're transferring it from the RV.
The RV, yes.
To what?
The general one?
Yeah, the general.
'Cause the RV park does not have checks.
Only way you spend it.
Did that conclude?
That one's, and Miranda's not here, so I'm not sure, I think everyone else is, Jen, maybe knows, or anything else, looks okay.
No, no, it's okay, good, moving on. Do, has everybody had a chance to look at the past minutes from our last meeting? Can I give a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
Bracken?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Glenda?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Everybody had a chance to look at the purchase orders? Okay. Can I give a motion to approve P O's for the general fire and ambulance fines?
Right, well. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes.
Bracken, yes. Harper?
No, this is your.
You can't say no when she asks.
Yes.
Harper. Glenda.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that's my pass.
Happy wedding. No wedding present.
Little lady.
Moving right along, the line item number seven. We need to discuss and take action on our trash rate ordinance.
You'll have to have a copy of the old ordinance.
No, I didn't find it.
Okay.
I thought it was used last night, you want me to find it?
No, our poly cart rate hasn't changed.
No.
Except for additional poly cart, it was changed to cover the cost of its increase. And dumpsters went up, just enough to be at the same percentage as the poly carts are, so.
You might look at section two.
Carry it all along a little bit.
When is our effective date?
June one, when I put it.
Twenty-one oh seven.
Oh, I need also my date before I sign it, change that date. Sorry, I did that all day when I typed in that date, everything that I did.
Only a hundred years.
Yeah, yeah, June one, we give them thirty days.
Those seem really, really cheap.
Sorry, so don't, don't sign that one, I will fix it.
Can you agree that? I don't know. I didn't know whether to do that, I thought, hey, coat your finger, add a handle, where to pay?
Well, I just thought you weren't paying attention, he said they're texting or something, I didn't know he was actually working. I'm in trouble.
I had a minute's lost, harm, but.
Good.
With a tasker.
Yeah, wasn't easy, I was trying to hold it like.
Yeah.
Tiny little fella.
This may seem O C B, but it's seventeen twenty-five for a cart, can it not be seventeen?
That's fine, there's, it was, just, that's what it was in the past, that's why I left it like that, that's what we said, just leave it, yes, I can make it seventeen.
Will everybody say things for a forty-five cent decrease in trash rate?
Sure.
I wonder why we've been overcharging twenty-five cents.
Well, we got a new contract. You gotta do contracts, this makes sense.
I'm just gonna strike that and say seventeen. That way I can almost memorize the rates.
Seventeen twenty-fives will be stuck in your head though, that's what you want.
I know, now that we've discussed it.
No, don't sign that one, I have to fix it, and then you'll sign the appropriate one, when you're signing checks tonight, as I fix it while you're signing checks.
Can you fix that while we're signing checks?
I can, as long as you approve the minutes here.
Does everyone agree with the ordinance, even at seventeen dollars for poly cart?
Yeah, that's fine, that's.
And to have an effective date of?
June.
First.
First.
June first, two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah.
Now, I make the motion that we adopt that.
I'll second. I.
Bracken?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Galindo?
Yes.
It's now six twenty-eight. It's now six twenty-eight, just saying.
I will soon file a motion to adjourn.
Don't hurry.
First time done in the motion.
You don't need anything more from me?
No, Sturridge, you're free to go, because.
I'm almost done.
We have any new business?
No.
Okay, have a great one.
You too. If no further ado, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I'm sorry.
It's on me, that.
Yeah, second, if you gotta, he's wanting to take your motion.
All right, you ready, Lynn?
Yep.
And that's a win.
Can you eventually print a copy of the ordinance?
Yes, I will, yes. Probably by the time you have your hammer down, I'll have one for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my strip copy, officially, I.
What do you call it, copy?
My strip copy.
Oh, all right.
My strip through, my stripping copy, I don't know.
I might accidentally print that, I don't remember that.
All right, call the order, the M T A, schedule meeting for May sixteenth at six-thirty P M. Who do you like to call the one?
Bracken.
Present.
Harper.
Here.
Glenda.
Here.
All present, please proceed.
Um, do we have any discussion or action on past minutes from April twelfth's meeting? Now I make a motion.
I'll second.
Past those minutes? Yes.
Yes.
Glenda.
Yes.
All yes.
Any discussion on P O's for the M T A fines?
Go.
Then I make a motion to approve P O's for the M T A fines.
I'll second.
Bracken?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Glenda?
Yes.
All yes.
Any new business?
No, mark that out, sorry.
Any remarks from the governing board? Any remarks from the governing board? This is your chance to give that big speech. For the...
I better hold off.
Okay. No remarks from the governing board, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At six thirty-one PM.
Use our records on it, I'm not trying to...